Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting for Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023. The school committee has just come out of an executive session that began at approximately 6:30. We are now resuming the meeting in open session. And if we could, as we start our meetings, invite everyone to join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, as we start our meetings, we'll like with the reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Item number six on the agenda is a public comment. This time invite any member of the public, whether here or on Zoom, if this would seek to share comments or concerns with the school committee, are welcome to do so. Not seeing anyone. Do we have anyone on the, no one on Zoom? Okay, moving on to item number seven, Student Advisory Council. Come on up, share, and we're, great to see you, please. How are things at Wakefield Memorial High School?
Pretty good. Um, this week is our last week for the seniors, and they're working on their final exams this week. And we will be hosting our Middle Sex League Unified Basketball Hoopapalooza Jamboree this year. The event is scheduled for next Wednesday from four to six at the Galvin Middle School. We also have a Memorial Day Assembly this Friday, and we also would like to take a minute to thank Molly and Isabella, our seniors, for their work as school committee reps for the past two years. They're both seniors on the lacrosse team, and tonight is their senior night, so they were unable to make it, but they will hopefully be coming to the next meeting to say goodbye.
So you're pitch hitting for them tonight, so how to speak, right?
Yes.
Did you introduce yourself and what?
I'm Lauren, and I'm a junior this year.
Great. Lauren, thank you very much for pitching in and coming to the meeting and that. That's great. You did a very nice job.
Lauren, could you share a little bit about the civics projects that are happening?
Yes. So, um, our juniors are working on a civics project, and we get to pick a topic of our choice, do research, reach out to local politicians, and we're gonna create like a tri-board poster, and we'll be able to present it in the fieldhouse, and it will be a time for everyone to come see what we've worked on all year.
Be great.
Yes.
Do you have a sense when that will be?
June 9th, I believe. Yes.
June 9th, okay. We'll make a note of that.
Yes.
That's great. Any questions for Lauren? Well, thank you very much. Thanks for pitching in, and thank you very much.
Of course.
For the update. Item number eight on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a motion, Mr. Ingles.
A move that the school committee approve the minutes of the May 2nd, 2023 Boston Metco School Committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the May 9th, 2023 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
The motion made the second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passed unanimously. Budget items. Dr. Lyons. We have any, we have the business reports in our packet tonight?
I believe that there's a motion for payroll warrants.
There is?
There is. A move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 42 and 44 as presented.
Second.
Motion made the second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. There's no gifts this evening, so we'll be moving on.
Great. I just call to the committee's attention, and the public, if they're seeing the packet, that the monthly financial statements through the end of April are in the material. Our business administrator wasn't able to be here tonight, but she certainly prepared her due diligence, so I'll certainly reach out to either members of the finance subcommittee or to Ms. Bupfagner directly with any questions on that, but the end of month material is in the packet as expected. Moving on, item number 10, chairs, comments, and updates. First, as we are now here for the first time in the studio since the election, our last meeting being in Boston with our Metco families, I'd like to officially welcome Pete Davis. Congratulations on your election, and Dr. Piscadlo, congratulations on your reelection. We were able to say that in Boston, but we didn't have the advantage of being on camera in that, so certainly welcome. This is our first meeting in studio with both of you as back and elected and re-elected, so congratulations. I would like to call to the entire committee's attention, not just Pete and Kevin. There is a charting the course, which is a professional development requirement for all school committee members, not just all new school committee members, but certainly all school committee members. It certainly must be taken within the first, I think it's 20 days or thereabouts or of your election. There's, it's run by Mass Association of School Committees, and it's an individual responsibility, so I don't, please certainly go to the MASCE website or reach out to us to help, you know, to sort of facilitate that, but that is an important piece of training. It helps, that's the work. It's a great, you know, orientation to state law and state regulation, state expectations of law around school finance, around special education, around, you know, employment, employing the superintendent, supervision evaluation, so there's lots of important topics there. And MASCE always welcomes any member who would like to attend and sort of get up to speed on what may be new. I know that over the course of years, I've done it a handful of times, just because it's new information every year for that. The other thing that is, that is new in 2023 is the State Ethics Commission's requirements around the state, the state conflict of interest law, the so-called State Ethics Test. It's not really a test, but it's around a conflict of interest. There's an expectation that all town employees, of which we are considered for these purposes, even though we're uncompensated, we're still a municipal employee in this regard, are required to take a, to take the new State Ethics Conflict of Interest Training, the conclusion of which is an actual test. So we are expected to restart. The training itself is new in 2023. So there is, there hasn't been a lot of information around that. I know the HR department for the town from Town Hall has shared with Dr. Lyons and myself this information, and I just wanted to share it with the committee and, so that also is an independent expectation. It's not a group thing, but certainly log on to the State Ethics Commission website, and it's fairly easy to navigate and find that. Our requirement is to take the 2023 version of the Conflict of Interest Training. The last piece of that is the taking of a test and then printing out of a certificate, which must be turned into the town clerk, so.
I think just to let you know, Tom, in case you didn't, I think Sheri had shared out, I think it was Sheri Dalton, had shared out with every member, sort of a link to how to get to it, and then you would send her back a copy of your receipt for like certification, whatever it was, and just so she would have it on file.
Yeah, she's, I believe, Sheri Dalton is the Steve Mayo's administrative assistant. I think she's been designated as the point person for this, which has to be a horrible task for.
I am incorrect. It was Karen.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anyway, the minutia around that is not the point. The point is that we have to take this test in 2023, so please, everyone, do so.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Next, town meeting, town meeting review, town meeting update, I think. Offer anyone that may have thoughts or comments to share with the group, but certainly I would like just to say from the offside, you know, a tremendous, again, appreciation to the townspeople, to the townspeople that had assembled the Galvin Middle School and had worked, and had some very thoughtful discussions on town meeting floor. And obviously, ultimately, the support for our asks and our budget in fiscal year '24 and the types of needs that we perceived. Spend, you know, eight months getting ready for that. It's a long, thoughtful, engaging process, which is good. We want to be able to, I think, thank our finance committee liaisons who are with us very often, certainly from December on right up through town meeting, providing good insight and direction and guidance in many, in many ways. So my true sense would be just to thank the members, you know, the voters of the town for their support in '24. I think it's also fair to say that we heard the comments and concerns that were raised, both from the floor and throughout our public process, about getting more and more ready for some challenging decisions in the years to come. And I think the beginning of that in fiscal year '25, we're planning. So that can't go understated that we're, that we see that in our forecast and are prepared to begin those conversations. So I'll just open it up to anyone else that may offer any thoughts or that. Certainly thank you to Dr. Lyons for the presentation that you made and the preparation that went in from you and your team to get us, to get us to that point.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, item number 10E. Just an update on teacher contract negotiations. They remain ongoing. Our last session was last Wednesday. We could go tomorrow. I think we're in a decent pace and having a good vibe. We have a pretty aggressive schedule, working with the teachers' union between now and the end of the fiscal year, and hopefully we're going to be able to make some continued progress. We're in a, we're in a pretty good, we're in a pretty good space. We certainly got some things to continue to work on and work through, as is appropriate to the negotiations process, but I think people should be pleased at the progress that's been made and the collaborative conversations that are being had. And I certainly want to thank, you know, the teachers' union and the teacher union leadership for the, for the work and the energy and the effort that they've put into this process. It's all work they're doing, you know, after hours and after time on their own time to make, not only make the teaching and learning environment better, but obviously to make their, their contribution to that. So it's been, it's been a good, a good couple of months. Look forward to, to the next month and a half. Next and last on the chairs, comments is just an announcement, just to make it a public announcement, to one, inform the committee as well as to inform the community, that we will take our annual school choice vote at our next school committee meeting. The annual vote is to whether Wakefield Public Schools would be a school choice community or not. That's an annual vote required to be taken by state law. There will be a notice put into the paper as a requirement for that, so members of the public can come and comment if they feel we should or should not be a school choice community. So on June 6th, will the school choice vote will include a public hearing, an actual public hearing, which we will go through the formal process of opening hearing and allowing members of the community to speak. We are not and have not been a school choice community, school choice, school district, rather, but that is an annual vote that the school committee must take, so we will be doing that at our next meeting on Tuesday, June 6th. Okay, moving on, item 11, the superintendent's reports and remarks. Dr. Lyons.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Mr. Markham, with your permission, I'd like to take my items out of order.
Please do.
And I would like to invite Amy McLeod and the amazing students that are here with her to please come to the table.
And we already know Lauren. Lauren's a two-timer tonight.
Do you want to take that microphone and introduce yourselves? Want to start that?
Yeah.
Just say your name and grade.
Hi, my name's Grace. I'm a current junior.
Hi, I'm Gabriella. I'm a senior.
And Lauren, did you say what grade you were in already?
My name is Lauren, and I'm a junior, still.
For another couple of weeks?
Yeah.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. So the end of the year is always a nice opportunity where we get to not only kind of wrap up the year and have closure on things, but we have multiple opportunities to celebrate some of our most outstanding students. So tonight, I'm really pleased to introduce two groups of students. So our juniors, Lauren and Grace, I'll talk about first, and then Gabby is here with me, and Molly could not be there tonight. Again, she couldn't present, and she, so they have senior night at lacrosse, so I'll talk about Gabby and Molly separately. So first, talking about Lauren and Grace. So Lauren and Grace are winners of what we call the SILS Award. So each year, the principals of the 12 Middle Sex League schools are able to select two students who we feel most represent, two students from the junior class who most represent the attributes of the SILS Award. And SILS stands for Scholarship, Integrity, Leadership, and Service. And by far, these two kind of rose to the top for all of those categories, so I'd like to tell you just a little bit about each of them. I know them pretty well, so I could probably tell you a lot of the stuff off the cuff, but they do so much, I don't want to miss anything. So first, Lauren. You know, Lauren is probably one of our ultimate initiative takers in the building. Lauren has an incredible sense of duty to always doing the right thing, and it makes them a positive impact and a significant difference in our community. So always the first to volunteer. Some of you may have seen Lauren run school tours or support other school-wide events, always there to sell tickets or to give tours to younger students or to greet families, to be on the train to the Polar Express.
The Jolly Jingle Express.
Sorry, sorry, I cannot say that. Jolly Jingle Express, thank you so much. And then also being a student representative here at the school committee. Another thing that Lauren has done while most students are a teaching assistant just to one teacher, Lauren's role has grown to support multiple teachers in the math department. Lauren is so skilled that multiple teachers have wanted them to work in their classrooms. Lauren definitely extends that service to students, too, tutoring them, helping them to build confidence, and really helping them tackle challenging content. And that's really just some of the academics. Lauren's also dedicated in other areas, a member of the indoor and outdoor track team. They were recently named captain for next year, a performer in winter percussion, and a leader and future drum major in the marching band. So given all of those things and the incredible personality Lauren brings to the table, they truly exemplify not only the SILS values, but our school's core values. So I was very pleased to, you know, offer this award to Lauren, so. And similarly, Grace. I'll tell you a little bit about Grace as well, whose resume and repertoire is just as varied and long as Lauren's, but just for a few things. You know, Grace has really been active in the school committee, school community since she was a freshman. She serves as the class vice president, a member of the basketball team and swim team, and will be captains of both next year. She's involved in the youth action team and is really focused on raising awareness around dating violence. In fact, some of her efforts and some of her peers' efforts resulted in a lesson plan for advisory that all our teachers taught, and really helped think about school, sorry, relationship violence for all students during that advisory period, and it was student-led, which was wonderful. Grace is also, this is kind of a fun one, if you follow social media for our school's Breezy, our school's therapy dog, Grace has taken a lead on really getting to know Breezy and the work that Breezy does with Suzanne. And Suzanne, if you're watching, sorry, I know it's really your work, but we love Breezy, too. So, and Grace has sort of carried the social media account, and that's actually really been a helpful thing to help the community see how Breezy is being used in the school and the kinds of relationships that Suzanne's able to forge with students through Grace's kind of capturing of Breezy's life at school. She's an integral part of eighth-grade visits, again, always on the forefront with Lauren, leading tours, talking to small groups, talking to parents, and really helping students ease anxiety and make a smooth transition to the high school. Grace's teachers really describe her as passionate and kind, hardworking, and a natural leader. And again, all of the qualities that exemplify SILS recipients. So while these two are only juniors, we really expect some even greater things to come from them next year, so congratulations to the two of you.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you want to ask any questions. I can switch to the seniors if you want. You can talk about the seniors a little bit. So a little bit differently, our, one senior here, our two seniors, Superintendent Lyons and I, were able to bring two seniors, so all of the superintendents in the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association districts, they are able to honor two students, and they ask us to highlight students who have academic achievements and overall excellence. So there were no two students that I could think better from the senior class than Molly and Gabby. We were also, so Superintendent Lyons and I were able to go with Molly and Gabby last week, was it? The time is going so quickly, I can't keep track. So we were able to go to a luncheon with their families, and they were each able to select a trusted adult, and the school had made a difference, so we invited them to come with us. So that was Catherine Cameron, one of our science teachers, and Meg Delory, one of our counselors. And so at that dinner, we got to sort of hear from and see all of the other students in the Merrimack Valley leagues, and I'll tell you, Molly and Gabby are keeping some incredible company. They are two very accomplished young people, and they were in a room of very well-accomplished people. So I'll tell you a little bit about Molly first, in abstention. I think you already know this, that Molly is a model of positive energy in the community. It's always so enjoyable to watch her engagement, whether it's up on a lacrosse field, whether she's serving as a peer tutor, even just leading National Honor Society, being in the marching band, a section leader in the marching band, working with class officers, or even coming here to speak to you all as a representative, and you get to see that energy every other week. She's really dedicated, compassionate, and helpful to her classmates. One of the ways that I see this, Molly is one of the folks who have spearheaded National Honor Society tutoring, and I often get to walk through the guidance office while Molly's working with students. And it's just amazing to me how she can explain really complex material that often I can't understand, higher-level math, say, in really understandable and compassionate ways. She's patient and kind, and she's really a gift to our community in that she, even though she is such a high-performing student, she is able to kind of transform that understanding and knowledge to all learners. So she really is quite talented. I'm sure if she hears me talking about her later, she would be mortified to be listening to all these things said about her, because she's also incredibly humble. So Molly is heading to the University of Washington next year, and we know that she's going to be, you know, continue to be a superstar there as well. And that leaves us with Gabby. So I only really got to know Gabby a little bit this year, and I've known her siblings as they've come through the school, but I feel a really important connection to Gabby because she is heading to Villanova University next year, where I graduated from. So again, a little V's up for our fellow Wildcats. But I did talk about, you know, the thing that's interesting to me about Gabby is I know the motto with Villanova is veritas, unitas, caritas. So the idea is truth and unity and caring. And so when I think about Gabby and some of the things that she's done, she really already exemplifies those core values that I know are so important in the Villanova community and that they're important here, too. So when you think about truth, you know, she has explored her own truths through high-level learning in all areas. She was just talking to me out there about being done with her AP Chemistry exam and being really excited about some project that I don't understand, but really this idea of always learning, always wanting to grow. I mean, the AP tests are over, and she's still excited about learning and presenting her project as a senior, where some of them, no offense to those seniors out there who were checked out, but, right, she's still going and wanting to learn more. So she's going to fit in, right, beautifully there. Unity and community, always somebody who is thinking about being part of a community, both with her teachers and her peers alike. She's a three-season athlete. She captains two track teams, and she also showed great leadership on the soccer team, and she really has an authentic desire to help others, much like Molly. She has worked with the National Honor Society to really increase their visibility around tutoring and support and work in the community. She really wanted to promote a positive culture of volunteerism, so that unity really comes through. And her personal service ranges from all the work that she's done in nursing homes and assisted living centers to teaching kids with disabilities, and she's worked with kids with disabilities, teaching them how to skate, and really thinking about some of our most, schools' most vulnerable students and spending time and figuring out ways to include them in the community. She has passions and hobbies, and I just know that this legacy of excellence and difference-making is going to make her a great Wildcat. So that is Molly and Gabby. And so, again, our school community couldn't be more proud of these four young people, and two get to stay with us, and two are going to go off and make, you know, make us proud to call them graduates of the school in just a couple of weeks.
That's wonderful. Committee members? Kevin?
Yeah, you know, I feel very inadequate hearing about all the ways that you've contributed to this school and this community, and just really impressed with the ways that you have done so, in so many different areas, too, I think was, which is particularly impressive. Like, we've seen Lauren throughout the year, as they've been here, you know, filling us in on some of the things. I guess my question is, is maybe related to Ms. McLeod, you had said at the dinner that you were able to go to with Dr. Lyons, that you were able to invite Gabby, you were able to invite someone from the school to come with you, like a mentor or a trusted adult. So can you talk a little bit about who you picked and why? And then I'd be curious for the juniors, if you had a similar opportunity to think about maybe someone here who has influenced your leadership, your experience, who would that be and why?
So I picked my guidance counselor, Ms. Delory. She, I just, I, I start, most people in the school, like, they don't really know their guidance counselors the first couple of years, and then you hit your junior year, and you're like, so, college. And then, and I've not, I guess, bothered. I've been to her room very frequently, junior year and senior year, and I just got to know her so well, and she's always been there for me. And like, I could email her, and it'll be her lunch period, and she'll go and sit in her office and talk to me, and I just, I was so grateful for everything she did, and she's one of, like, I'm so comfortable with her, and I knew, like, this is the person. Like, when it said, like, you can invite someone, I didn't even have to think about it. I just, it was great.
That's awesome. That's great.
I also agree with Gabby. I would totally, Ms. Delory is also my guidance counselor, and I feel the same way about her. But if I had to choose someone else, I think I'd choose one of our class advisors, Ms. Loren. She's also my Spanish teacher, and aside from Spanish and her, like, helping me with all the extra help I need in that class. She's just super supportive, always looking to help our class, at least with, like, prom and everything that just happened junior year that was stressful, but she was super on top of it, very organized. I look up to her and her organization, and she's just another face in the building I can go to talk to about literally anything, so I really appreciate her, and I would say she would be my trusted adult.
Mine is pretty much a no-brainer. Mrs. Malanson, I had her last year as my algebra teacher, and this year, I'm her teaching assistant. And she's been with me, like, through thick and thin. She always puts a smile on my face. She's, she helped me through a really rough year last year, and she's just, is always so happy to see me in the hallways and always smiles, and she's always down to talk about anything. And she's already asked her at my college recommendation letter, like, she's just so awesome, and I'm really glad that I've gotten to know her so well over the past two years.
That's awesome. Thanks for sharing that. I'm sure that's really meaningful to them. So good luck, Gabby, in college, and I look forward to hearing about the ways you'll both continue to contribute next year as well. So thank you and congrats.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for everything that sort of you brought back to the community, and it's, that, it just creates that. And it's, that, it just creates that tapestry. It's not just sort of, I know that you've gotten things from educators. I know you've been sort of on the receiving end, but being able to give back and give back to your peers. And you've also given back to educators, and I'm sure, I'm sure there's probably countless stories, as many as you can remember. There's other stories that people probably tell about you. And so thank you for everything you've brought back to your, your school community. It's, it's not without note, and it is a big deal. So thank you for that. On a lighter note, I'm curious, Grace, what is, I assume Breezy has an Instagram handle?
She does. It is @BreezyTheTherapyDog. There might be an underscore in there. I feel like I should know. If you just look up BreezyTheTherapyDog, it'll, it'll pop right up.
Okay. I will make sure to follow that. And then I was also at the recent Wake Up Breakfast. And I think you presented on some of the work that you were doing in terms of dating violence, and just really, like, again, top, like, top caliber stuff on sort of what you're bringing back to your peers and finding out areas of concern and how not just to think about them and talk about them, but how to action them. And it was your group, and it was pretty much every group that was there that was presenting on sort of work that they were doing within the community was, it, it, it's not just the name. You are the Youth Action Committee because that's what you do, is you find the steps to take. And so it doesn't, it doesn't just fall, you know, on deaf ears. And so thank you for all of that work. And all of you, it's, it's great to have you here and be able to celebrate you. Thank you.
Dr. Lyons?
So I would just add to what Mr. Ingalls said, you know, the love, care, and respect in the ways that you described your teachers. I think it's easier for you to talk about your teachers than certainly sit and listen to the lists of accolades of things that you've achieved, right? It's a little uncomfortable sitting. I can see, you know, how you're squirming in your seat, listening to the lists. But, you know, I think that the care and the regard that you have for your teachers, I think you need to know that that is mutual, and you kind of brighten their day as you describe them brightening yours. So I assure you, right, that, that teachers, I consider myself a teacher. Ms. McLeod, I know, considers herself a teacher. To be in public education today, you're the reason, right, that keeps us coming back and keeps us really kind of pushing ourselves. So you guys are crushing it, and so we're looking forward to continue to supporting you. And Gabby, best of luck next year. Be really proud of you. Thank you so much.
Indeed, thank you. And again, congratulations, and thank you, Ms. McLeod, for bringing them up before us tonight and being able to share some wonderful stories. Congratulations to all of you, and best elekt at Villanova.
Go Cats!
Thank you so much. I'm going to continue taking the last parts of my list, and then I will end with budget, a budget update and my, as well as some additional comments. But up next is Erin Manzi, and she will be talking about the Quebec trip and seeking approval from the school committee. Will be making a motion at the end of her presentation. Erin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Great.
Excellent. Thank you. So I'm not sure, am I able to see the slides, or should I just kind of talk from, like, oh, excellent, there they are, fabulous. So thank you so much for having me tonight. Like Doug said, I'm Erin Manzi. I am the World Language Curriculum Coordinator, grades five through 12. And I'm also here with Jordan Macca. Jordan, are you there? Jordan is one of our three World Language French teachers at the Galvin Middle School. And so she's here tonight to kind of support me with some questions that you may have about our trip to Quebec. So again, so I'm here tonight to present and ask approval of a trip to Quebec. It is, the opportunity is going to be for our eighth graders next year, the year of 2324, is for the eighth graders. Could you turn to the next slide, please? Thank you so much. So again, for the eighth-grade Galvin Middle School French students, we would travel February, Friday, February 9th through Sunday, February 11th. We would be taking a tour bus to Quebec City, typically leaving around 6:00 AM in the morning, and it's about a seven or eight-hour journey. So we'd probably get there around, I would say, mid-afternoon. The tour company we're going to be using is Prometour. Jordan has used Prometour in her previous district, and Sharon, and has, has experienced, good experience with this tour company. Cost for students and parents obviously depends on the price. And I apologize, I think the prices are a little bit different what I have on here, which is on this. And I'm going to correct it with my notes that I have here. So for 30 or plus students is that top price, which is $923. 26 to 29 students is $974. 12 to 25 is $1,043. 18 to 21 is $1,143. And then 14 to 17, I can repeat this again for people, is, is $1,303. I apologize about the correction in that. There is also, if parents would like to buy additional insurance, which is students can cancel the trip for any reason up to 48 hours before. There is an additional $40 for that insurance, and parents would receive 75% of the cost of the trip if they like to purchase that. The next slide, please. So just a little bit about the itinerary. That first day, again, we would leave Friday around 6:00 AM, arrive in Quebec City around mid-morning, I'm sorry, mid-afternoon. That day, we are greeted by our tour manager, who's bilingual and will stay with us for the duration of the trip. That first day, students have the opportunity to sightsee. They attend, or they can tour the Catholic Basilica. They have, they can shop in Old Quebec. That night, they have dinner at the Sugar Shack, which they are able to take in an authentic lumberjack dinner, which the kids love. There is singing, dancing. Students are able to play instruments. I've actually participated in this. The students have a blast. It's a great way to start the trip. The next slide, please. The next day is absolutely jam-packed, and these are all new activities. We typically go to Quebec City in, actually, this week, Memorial Day weekend. And we've changed it this year. We really want the students to be able to engage in winter activities and really see what Quebec City is like in the winter and see how many outside activities that people traditionally do during this time. So they're going to start off that day with dog sledding and snowshoeing to start off. They're going to be visiting the Ice Castles. There is, I'm trying to read my notes here, snow rafting, they'll be doing. Later on that day, they'll be taking a ferry across the St. Lawrence River. And I think one of the most important parts of this whole weekend is that it's during, it's actually the beginning of Carnaval de Quebec, which is the winter carnival, the beginning of the Lenten season, and, which is a fabulous, fabulous festivities during this time for students really to engage in these festivities and to be able to attend one of the parades. It's such a great cultural experience for them. And then the third day, they're going to be starting off with some traditional croissants and hot chocolate at an adorable French café that I've been to with previous groups. They'll be taking a tour of the Fairmont Hotel, which is an iconic hotel in the center of Quebec City. They will be, Jordan, help me out with this next one. It's the Ice Luge that many people probably have seen. I will not be doing that because I have a fear of heights, but the students will absolutely love it. The Ice Luge, and then we're off later that day. So there, it's jam-packed with activities for students to do. I actually love this itinerary even more. Nothing against the old one, but this, to me, is iconic for Quebec City in the wintertime. If you go to the next slide. So what is included in the program? Again, there's two nights in the hotel. There'll be three, possibly four students in each hotel room. Meals in the hotel are included. There are two breakfast dinners, one lunch and two dinners. All activities that I just mentioned are included in the price. We will have the tour manager with us for the duration of the trip. Ground transportation from Boston to Canada and and around the city as well. For the ratio for chaperone to student, so we have one free chaperone per every seven students that will be attending the trip. And that last, and just really about the educational objectives and how this ties to world language. I think it goes, we can just, I could go on and on about the educational experience and how beneficial this is for students to really step out of their comfort zone, being, being able to really engage in the language and the culture of other people around the world. I just came back from the trip from Europe, where students were traveling to Barcelona and Paris, and just really seeing them dive into the culture of the people and really experiencing it. Experiencing it was, it was, it was a great experience for them and for me to really see them light up, become independent, and really enjoy themselves with their peers and with me as well. So when I open it up to any, I know I've talked really quickly, just trying to get everything in as quickly as possible, but I'd love to open up for you for any questions, or Jordan, if you have anything to add that I may have missed. I think you're all set.
Are there any, any questions? Yes, Pete?
First of all, Erin, thank you so much for bringing this program back. How many years has it been since the students have been able to do this?
So the last time we attended the trip was 2019. I attended the trip with the students during that time.
Because I had heard-
Yeah, so it's been, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah, I heard from some families who were really hoping to bring something back this year, and I know it didn't work out, but it's great that you're going to be able to bring something back next year.
It was, yes, it was a little difficult. Canada was one of the last locations to really open up. And back in the fall, we were still looking at vaccinations and not, not everything was completely opened up. So I was a little apprehensive to start the trip this past year.
And then I did have a question that's a little more generic, but I'll ask it specific to your trip. So one of the things I've heard from other families is just those who struggle financially to make some of these trips work. And so I'm just curious, you know, first of all, I'm definitely in favor of the trip. But my question is, if a family is struggling, what do we have, if anything, to help those families? And what's the process for them to get assistance? And is it a small amount of assistance, a large amount of assistance, or we don't know yet?
Sure. I did talk to Megan Webb, obviously, before I presented for today, you know, just to get her verbal approval to move forward with this. And I did have a conversation with her, and we did talk about, just in general, about, like, really making this accessible to all students. And it is difficult, and I do realize, just really thinking about this past trip in Europe, it is expensive for, for families. I know the passport company that we work with in Europe did have some financial assistance for, for students, depending on how many students were going on the trip. This particular company, at this point, does not have anything from, from their standpoint. That doesn't mean, they did give us a list of ideas to fundraise, to contribute some money towards it. Again, I do realize it is a lot of money. But I will work with Megan because I do feel that this is an important experience, that students should not be left out for finance, because of financial worries and hardships. I completely understand and agree. So I will continue to work with Megan and the administration at the middle school to see how we can make this accessible to all students. I don't have a definite answer for you right now, Peter. I wish that I did, Pete. But I do agree with you that we need to, the more these trips run, I know we have New York City. I know that we have the DC trip in the middle school. And it does add up, especially having two trips in the eighth grade for those parents.
And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't specific to this trip. It was more of just a general question. I definitely am in favor of making sure that no family has a child who can't attend one of these trips due to a financial hardship. And I think the burden is on us to go figure out how we make sure that happens and whether we, you know, have some, something we can do from the school department or ask the PTOs to get involved to help with fundraising. We definitely want to make sure that this is inclusive to, to any student that wants to attend. Thank you.
I, I agree. I agree. I know that Jordan did put out a Google form to students asking if students, how many students would be interested in the trip. And, and she did ask, do not decline your interest because of financial, because of financial situation. I want to know how many students that we have. We have over 30 students that said they would be interested in this particular trip. And then we would go to, obviously, not outing students, we'd just say, talk to us, reach out to us if you need some financial assistance.
Yeah, Erin, I don't know if this is for you or for Jordan, but I was curious about where I see the, the point about one, one free traveler for every seven. Is that how we're counting chaperones, or is there a direct correlation there, like, one to seven? Or is there another number that we're using to calculate number of chaperones to student?
It's one to seven.
Okay.
It's one to seven. Yes.
So in the case of, so let's, for numbers sake, if there was 14 students, there'd be two chaperones. If you got to, like, 15 or 16, would you bring on an additional, or like, would you just see how it felt? I don't know, yeah, what the calculus is.
Right. I think we would probably see how it goes. And if we did hit, let's just say, I don't know, let's just say we were at, like, 18, I would probably work with the company and see, and see what we could do there. Because obviously that, I don't want to have two chaperones for 18 students or, like, like 19 students, you know. So we'd probably work with the company to see what we could do there. Because it's like, right, right underneath, yes, having three chaperones. Is that what you mean?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Yes.
And are chaperones strictly educators, or are there parents, or what, what makes up the, the group that would be chaperoning?
So typically, in the past, we do reach out to teachers first to see if they're interested in the trip. I think it depends on the population of students that we have. I know in the past, I've run the trip to New York City. If we do have students that would need some extra assistance and parents would feel more comfortable going with, with their child, we've had students, we've had parents join us to New York City and DC in the past. So I think it really depends on the students that are, that are attending the trip.
Okay.
But typically, it's, typically, is, I would say, is 99% teachers. And again, depending on the students, sometimes parents join us.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, so I've, I've led a bunch of field trips like this in the past, mostly to Europe. And I just want to say, your day-two itinerary, like, I've never even thought of doing outdoor activities, which is just a great idea because I imagine that this is something culturally that people in Quebec do. And I think it's great that the students are going to be doing that. You know, I always, you know, I've done the stereotypical indoor museums, like, going to the city. So, yeah, no, I think the itinerary looks great. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, and I have, and I have to say, I have to give credit to Jordan for that because, like I said, typically, this trip has been running, I would say, at least 25 years since I've been here. I think almost 30, talking to Liz DuSette. I think that Liz DuSette was one of our sixth-grade teachers. I think she went on it when she was in eighth grade. But typically, it's in the spring. In, again, not to knock what we did before, but I think this itinerary for, thinking about eighth-grade students is, is super engaging. I think they're really going to enjoy, like, the cultural aspects of it, but it's hands-on. It's active, and I think those are two important things to really, for them to see activities, outside activities, for people to engage in other cities. So kudos to Jordan for really putting this itinerary together and making me step out of my comfort zone, thinking about the winter instead of just the springtime.
So just to add information to, for the committee and anyone that may be watching, what may not be captured in the slides is the amount of skill that both Jordan and Erin employ in planning this trip, right? And so there are hundreds of small, little details that get worked out in regard to student needs, family needs. So, you know, you asked about, for example, the, the chaperone ratio. Yes, it's seven to one, and Erin just alluded casually to, well, if we went to another number, we would look at student needs. That happens all the time, all of the time. And, and I know that their focus is how to make this work for kids, right? And, and I think that I don't want that to be missed in the presentation. And I think that that makes the trip only that much more appealing and accessible. So for that, I recognize it, and I want to thank you both.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the Quebec trip? Seeing then, we have a motion. Mr. Ingalls?
Move that the school committee approve the eighth-grade Galvin Middle School students' field trip to Quebec City, Quebec.
field trip to Quebec City, Quebec from Friday, February 9th to Sunday, February 11th, 2023 as present, 2024 as presented.
It is 2024, yes. A motion made and seconded, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. I see you, Eileen. I got you.
Like, what if I know I'm here?
Yeah, we know you're here, we know, yeah, yeah, we do, we do. Again, both, you know, Aaron and Jordan, thank you so much, just to reiterate without going on what everyone has said, thanks for bringing this back. Thanks for the energy and the passion and the love that you bring to make this work. So thank you and best of luck in all the planning and the fundraising.
I also, thank you, but I also want to say thank you to you too for your support and, and in our program. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Great. Well, have a great rest of the night. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is tiered focus monitoring, which is a, a different name. And so this, this new name, tiered focus monitoring, was changed probably about four years ago or five years ago. It was formally referred to as the coordinated program review. So these reviews happen every three years by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I invited Rosie Galvin, who's joining us tonight via Zoom, to talk a little bit about the process and also about the feedback that we got from the Department of Education.
Great, thank you, Doug.
Of course.
You guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, I'm happy to spend some time to talk about, as Doug said, what is this review, how we did on it, and then what does that mean moving forward and steps that we'll consider based on the feedback and the information that we have. So as Doug had just said, this is a review that happens every three years where the state looks at our processes in terms of special education, English learners, and also civil rights. And so there's two phases of this review. I know I shared at a school committee meeting last academic year that we were preparing for phase one, which was the self-assessment phase. So that happened last spring. And as part of that, the department worked on uploading various documents and procedures on this online portal. We had to do a review of selected special education files with students of various disability categories and various grade levels and with various levels of need across the district. And then we submitted that to the state and our chairperson who was overseeing the review. And then based on that self-assessment and also other data in terms of indicators that the state looks at, we're assigned a tier from one through four, one being the most self-directed tier based on all the information that you submitted and four being the least self-directed and the most kind of corrective action. So we were luckily, I think to, to the department's credit, has, were assigned tier one. And so that kind of dictated what phase two of the process was, which was the onsite verification phase. And so we just finished that about two weeks ago. And so what that entailed was our chairperson who led the review came in and she had two days onsite to review various records. So some of them were a review of some of the records we submitted for the self-assessment in phase one. And then also they chose various records based on, like I said, various disability categories, different schools, various levels of needs. And she spent two full days looking at our files. And then also as part of that, there was interviews with different staff members and myself. There was also surveys that were sent out to families and an interview with our CPAC as well. And so we just finished that up two weeks ago. And I'm happy to share some kind of feedback that we got from that in terms of how we did overall and like I said, how we're going to take that information to, to move forward. So we did great overall on the review, which is, which is really great. And I've shared this information with many of the teams so far at the district level in each school and will continue to share out information as we gather more. But our chairperson was able to share with myself and Doug after kind of having two days of reviewing files and, and doing interviews, I can talk about kind of the steps moving forward and how a formal report will be sent, which the department is working on. But she was able to give us some higher, higher overview feedback based on her time here in the district. And so I'll highlight just a couple of things that she said and I'll also highlight the two findings that we have, that we expect to see in the report that will, that will be produced in the future. So she was really impressed overall with the quality of our IUPs. She felt that they were really thorough and they were really well written. And also she highlighted that as part of the surveys that are sent out to families that 100% of, of the families who answered the question of whether they felt that they were involved in the IUP process, so that they agree or strongly agree with that, which she had said she really hasn't seen in another district before. So I was happy about that and happy to highlight that as a positive to the teams at the schools as well. And then also just another piece of feedback in terms of an area of a glow, was that families also felt like, by and large, that their feedback was valued in terms of the IUP process. So those were really positives that we're happy to hear about. And like I said, she had said based on her file review that there's two findings that she would expect to see and it goes through different various levels at the department level in terms of review from the work that our chairperson did, but I can highlight what those are. So we expect to see one finding in terms of a timeline for getting IUP proposals out to families after an initial or reevaluation meeting. And so there's a 45-day timeline. And so there was partial implementation on that in terms of making sure that there is a proposed IUP to families by the 45th day and not just that the meeting is held by the 45th day. That's one. And then the second is something called age of majority, which means that if a student on an IUP, when they turn 18, that they have the ability to make the decision as to whether they want to take over decision-making rights, whether they want to share those with their parent or parents, or whether they want to delegate it completely to parents. And so our obligation as an IUP team is to have a conversation with that student on their 18th birthday, review again their decision-making, which they were told a year prior, and then put that in their file. So we, we have done that consistently. The piece of feedback that we learned is that when the student, if they do decide to share decision-making with a family member or to take over decision-making completely, that they should also be signing the active version of their IUP. So very kind of specific feedback there in one portion of that more large age majority process. I know it's very technical, but I just wanted to share what those two findings were based on everything that they looked at in terms of the special education and civil rights indicators. So overall, like I said, two findings is, is a very strong review. And, you know, it's helpful information in terms of moving forward and, you know, thinking about professional development for, for faculty district-wide, especially in terms of the two findings that we have and looking at processes and policies that we have in the district to correct those. So just a last couple of comments, you just have an overview of the steps moving forward. Like I said, there's kind of three levels at the DESI that this review will go through after the chairperson kind of writes the report. And then once that's done, we'll get, we'll have 20 days for corrective action based on those two anticipated findings that I had said. We're kind of already doing the corrective action as right now. Like I've had some discussions with different departments at various levels to share this feedback. We're changing processes already. So it'll just be a matter of us, you know, reviewing that and submitting our action steps to correct those findings. And then after they have accepted our corrective action steps, a report will be generated for the public. It'll be available on our website and I'm also certainly happy to share it with this team as well. So I hope that was a helpful overview in terms of what that process is. Like I said, this happens every three years. Every other cycle, they look at a different set of indicators and it will certainly help us in terms of, you know, tailoring professional development sessions next year to get even better in some of these indicators and to just keep improving for, for the benefit of students. So I know that was a quick overview and I know some of those were pretty technical aspects, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Yeah, Kevin, then Eileen.
Is there a different set of indicators if we were, let's say, tier two as opposed to tier one? In other words, is, does each tier have its own set of things that they're looking for when they kind of, when they're evaluating or observing?
Yeah. No, it would be the same set of indicators that they're looking at, but it's kind of different level of guidance that you would get from the department based on what tier you're assigned. And then there's also targeted standards as well, so based on state data, that they might ask to look at another standard. We didn't have any of those that were identified. So for example, maybe student discipline, if kind of numbers from the state show that students of a certain subgroup are being disciplined more than another subgroup, that would be an indicator to the department and they might want to look at that specific targeted standard, but that was not the case for us. We just had the universal standards and they don't differ by tier.
Eileen?
Did you have a question?
Eileen, you had your hand?
Yes, hi. I had a question. The ser, you mentioned a survey, did it go out to all parents of kids on an ed plan or, because I don't recall seeing that personally. So I just, no.
They should have, yes. And I know that there was initial kind of feedback and the CPAC, I thanked them for their feedback in regards to that because they think that they had heard that some people were missing it. And so we sent out more information. Some went to their spam folder and so that was kind of corrected, but then we did some other action steps. Instead of using kind of the online school messenger portal, we did it in a different way to more directly target families. So I'm happy to check in with you if you didn't get that and apologize if that's the case.
Okay. No, no, just, just wondering. And then, so the area of the finding, the area of concern, I guess, I don't, whatever it is, the 45, can you go into a little bit more detail about the 45 days, the, of what, what's going to be corrected with that process?
Sure. Yeah, so this timeline is for any student who is going through an initial or reevaluation. So in order to evaluate a student for special education, you would send home a consent form to the family with the list of evaluations that you're seeking to do. And you can't start testing that student until you receive consent back from the family that says, yes, you can test them with the evaluation tools that you had mentioned in the evaluation consent form. So as soon as the district gets that back from the family signed, a timeline starts where we're obligated to finish testing the student within 30 school working days. And there's, this is kind of larger confusion, I think, at a district level because this is a common finding. And there's actually been a memo out from the state to districts to clarify the timeline. And it actually is further confused with our online system. We use Frontline or E-Star. It also, it makes it more confusing in there as well because it says meeting date as a 45-day date. But, so you're obligated to test the student within 30 school working days and to, the original kind of assumption was to have a meeting within the 45, by the 45th school working day in terms of that evaluation process. And so the clarity that the district has come out with or the, the state has come out with and clarified for districts, like I said, our chairperson was kind of clear that this was a common one, that you actually have to propose the IUP by the 45th day, not just have the meeting by that 45th day. And so ours were very, they were like one or two days off for the ones that we did have and that was only partial implementation. So it wasn't by and large that most of the files were like that, but that was, does that provide clarity as to what that means?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Rosie or Dr. Linz?
If, if I could just add, so again, this is just like a vertical slice. This is, you know, so we submit information to the department, the department assesses that information and then based on that assessment, they come out and that's really what prompts what they would like to see next against what they have universal standards that they'd like to address. And in this particular round, you know, they looked at, you know, how students were identified for special education, they looked at IUP development, they also looked at programming and support services, right? But again, this is like a moment in time where they, we got this feedback. I think one of the, there's a few things that I'd like to highlight. One is, and after, after the work is done, the evaluator meets with the superintendent and the director of special education. And one of the questions is, you know, would you like me, you know, how soon do you want this information? Because the sooner we provide it to you, the sooner it becomes, you know, unofficially official or however you, you could word it. But what it does is it gives you an opportunity to start to correct things. And so Rosie asked for the information immediately and, and so that we could get going on correcting anything that needed correcting. Two findings is a very, very low number, right? And I think that that is a testament and we would be remiss if we didn't kind of include in this conversation all of the people that do work day-to-day, the special education teachers, the coordinators, everyone that kind of dots those i's and crosses those t's in their day-to-day work with students in regard to support for students and programming and also in developing and writing these IUPs as well as assessing. So two findings, very low, I think in regard to a snapshot in time, very positive, very, very proud of our, of our teachers and certainly of, of Rosie for leading this review. And, you know, was most pleased when the evaluators, you know, shared with Rosie and I that she felt, she really felt like Wakefield was a district to watch and would it be okay if other people were going through this review, might she use us as a resource? And we said yes. And so thank you very much to our teachers and to Rosie. So nice job, Rosie.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Rosie, indeed. Yep, thank you for your, for your work and for the entire team's work.
Thanks for the time, Rosie, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, everyone.
So and just jumping up, just to cover a few more things. Comments and updates, as you've heard from our students, Friday is the last day for seniors. Amazing. Graduation is June, Saturday, June 3rd. And we're very excited about that and it's going to be, I think, a great day for our seniors. And just review of some things that are, have gone on last week. I know it has come up, we had the Wake Up Breakfast last week, which is an annual event where students present the work that they're doing in the community and how they are trying to affect change. We saw several, you know, people get up and summarize their work. They were, students were amazing. And I think so much credit goes to Catherine Dingra and, and the group of adults that she works with because, you know, giving students time, space and to, and an opportunity to talk about things that they're passionate about and change that they want to make, really special things can happen. So congratulations to the Wake Up Group. Thank you very much for hosting the annual breakfast last week on Albion Street at the Arts Center. So that's, that's an update. In addition, so just to, to let people know, this Friday morning, there will also be a Memorial Day Assembly that's hosted by the Social Studies Department here at the high school that will run from 9:45 to, to 10:45. And so it's really an outstanding event and the History Department does a really great job with that. So I just want, just in terms of comments and updates, like people to know that. So other news, just a quick budget summary or budget update, we are closing out the FY23 school year. Principals are working hard, looking at whatever resources they have available, you know, and, and we're trying to really be judicious about making sure that we're, you know, only kind of spending down and really getting things that we need and prioritizing to open school next year. One of the things that we talk about often is, you know, closing well to open well, right? Really thinking about closing in a way that prepares us to open school in August and how do we get kind of everybody, everything they need to kick off the year? So that's what we're doing in the FY23 space. In the FY24 space, you heard Tom report that our budget was approved at, at town meeting, really appreciative of all of the work and effort that went into that from our entire administrative team, but especially from Christine Bufagna, who works, you know, once a budget ends, you know, she works, starts to work on the annual report, which Tom can talk about because this is what he does also professionally. But, you know, we start getting ready to close out the year and, and start to write the annual report that has to go to the state. And then once that's done, there's a short break and then we get back at, you know, planning the budget for the following, for FY25. And one of the things that we've started to do this year, we've started to forecast, done differently this year in budgeting, we've started to forecast into FY25 and 26. And we know, as I've shared, that what continues to be a priority in the FY24 budget that will also carry over to 25 and 26 is labor, right? Making sure that we are able to provide a, a contract for our teachers that is representative of the work that they do every day. So that's where we're at. That's a quick budget update. Happy to answer any questions on any of the information or topics that have come up so far.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Lyons. Item number 12, Subcommittee Reports. The first two being finance and labor, like sort of, I think I provided the updates in earlier, so I'll move on. Unless anyone has any questions about either of those topics, happy to field those, of course. Student Services Subcommittee, Amy Liman, our Chair of Student Services, unable to be with us tonight for a family obligation. But any member of the Student Services Subcommittee seek to share any thoughts from your last meeting?
I forgot if, I honestly forgot if we had brought this up at the last school, full school committee meeting. So I just forgot the timeline, but the last time we met, we met with some building principals. I think, I think Dr. Lyons is on the call and then Carol was on it. And we were just discussing the survey that was sent out. And we were discussing trends in the survey and we basically got administrative feedback. So it was very, it was very good to get feedback from administrators. So it wasn't just what we saw in the data, but it was also their perception of the data. And we definitely wanted to carve out, you know, some time in the school committee meeting to give a formal presentation of the findings. So hopefully that can be done either in the next school committee meeting or the one in the end of June. But it would definitely make sense for this to happen before the, you know, the summer season starts. Yep.
Okay. Policy and Communications, Mr. Ingles.
Yeah. Our last meeting of Policy and Communications was, I believe, last week. We had talked about, again, we, we continue to talk about the NASC policy repository where we have our, our policy book going. And we do have our first version, our first block of our policies, mostly relating to bullying and Title IX that we're comfortable with. I think we wanted to lay that first set on the table for the committee to look at, for us to hopefully have a vote on for our next meeting to adopt. Along with that, we, we have a policy for our youth council liaisons having a few seats for additional voices from the student population. We have a, a policy that, for that, that we would like to put on the table that perhaps we could vote on at our next meeting. We also have a policy on right to know, we're busy. We also have a policy on the public's right to know. There was, there's some, it felt like some ambiguity about sort of how people go about finding out information in the district. Can we make it easier for them to, to find that information and also to know what the limits of that, that information is? Because there are limits as a, as a public body, what we can sort of disseminate in terms of student, student knowledge and the happenings. So this policy looks to, to sort of simplify that process, giving links to things like Mass General Law, other parts in the policy book as it pertains to sort of where that, that line for caregiver information would, would reside, both in what's accessible and how we can make it more easily accessible for, for stuff that is accessible. I think lastly, we talked about, there was recently a, a state Supreme Court decision that had to do with participation, public participation in public meetings. Wakefield's Town Council has, has brought this up. I actually just talked about it last night. And it really has to do with, there's verbiage in our, in our public participation policy that says effectively, you, you can't, it's not negative language, you can't talk disrespectfully, let's say, to the members of the body. And what the state Supreme Court found was that that's, that's not, that's not legal. Like it's, it's protected speech. You can effectively say what you want to say. And aside from having things that just say, please be polite, you can't police what people say. So it can be a recommendation, but not a requirement. So we will need to edit our, our policy around public participation. And, and we could look at other parts of it, but that, that is effectively what we're looking to do is just kind of take that language out that restricts what people can say. So, and that was, that was effectively it. But, so we are looking to put on the table, three of those four. I think we still have to get through the public participation. We still have to talk about if it's just that word. Town Council was talking about maybe putting in some language about length of discussion and how someone could get an extended amount of time and how they would, I don't know if we need to get that focused on it, but, but we'll talk about that a little bit more and probably table that at the next meeting.
So if the issues that you brought up are the three policies that you would like to bring them forward at the next meeting to put them on the table?
Yes.
Or you're not planning to put them on the table tonight?
No.
Okay. So at the June 6 meeting, you'll be planning to put them on the table and then at the following meeting, which would be June 27, we would, we would have the opportunity to vote on them?
Yes.
Is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Policy Subcommittee members? All right. Any Liaison reports? Any member of Liaison Group that would like to share?
I can share from the CPAC that they are holding their super, superhero, I want to get the wording right. They're basically asking for a call out for if there is someone in your student's life, someone that is in the district that has gone above and beyond providing service to your student, that you could nominate them for a superhero nomination. And so those nominations, you should see some communications going out throughout the district at multiple levels at least once a week through June 10. So if, if you know someone that, that that sort of speaks to and you'd like to nominate them, just keep an eye on your inbox and nominate them.
Very good. Great. Anyone else on, on Liaison matter? Seeing none? Okay, moving on. Item 13. Item 13 on the agenda is the annual committee reorganization, the election of officers. I'd just like to mention as a matter of procedure that we're in following our policy, which is policy number 207, which was recently amended. The policy does and has for some time required that all members be present for the reorganization of the committee. Our vice chair is not able to be with us tonight. So I, I wanted to obviously appropriately bring that to the committee's attention, bring it to the committee's attention and, and really, you know, barring an objection, would I guess recommend that we table this to the, to the next meeting. But certainly the committee can have that conversation as it, as it needs to. But in the absence of, of our vice chair, I think it might be appropriate to, to wait. But the committee has to make that. Is that something acceptable to all?
Yeah. I think the policy is pretty clear. And so if we just want to, you know, stick to, to the policy that we just recently amended, even though this wasn't part of the amended language.
No, that has been in there for a while. Yeah.
Yes, exactly. Then yes, I think, sort of holding off until we can all be together.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I think that's an important matter, that, for something that even though it's, it's really germane to the operation of the, of the seven member body working with, of course, with the superintendent, it's important to have everyone present and participating. So, okay. So we will table that until June 6, our next meeting. Item 14, future dates and agenda items. A couple of these dates the superintendent mentioned. But just going down the list rather quickly, the Wakefield Memorial High School graduation for the class of 2023 is on Saturday, June 3. We are all welcome, obviously, to participate and, and be, be observers and participants in that, in that process. So I know there's information will be, will be readily available about timing and placement and all of that. So when that information does come out, please get right back to the high school, high school administration about, about your attendance and presence. At our next meeting on June 6, we will be recognizing through our, an annual opportunity to recognize the retirees, those that have made their intentions known. We have, we dedicate every time, or sometime in the month of June to, to thank retirees for their, for their long tenure with the district and, and have an opportunity to walk through, walk through their years of service and, and just to be able to, to celebrate them. So that will be occurring at our next meeting as well. So are there any other agenda items that folks would like to make note of that they would like to see on a future agenda? Yes, Kevin?
Yeah, we, I sent an email to Dr. Lyons and Karen Morrow. We wanted to see an update on the accelerated math program in seventh grade at the Galvin and just get some feedback and see how that's going since the third trimester. But also, I was interested in looking if there was, we'd see any data over the course of the school year, looking at growth. So if we can look at any trends from the beginning of the school year through the end of the school year to see ELA in math growth trends, specifically elementary and middle school. That's it.
Okay. And I took a note, if, not to put words in the mouth, but I took a note from your Subcommittee Report to have a presentation on the survey data.
Yeah.
Is that something that I could add to not be misrepresenting the request?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Any other, any other thoughts about agenda items for the next meeting or the meeting after that or sometime soon?
Presentation on school start times from Alexa Manzi.
Could have done it tonight and had half the Manzi clan here. That would have been great.
Okay. Of course, if you think of something in the interim, don't reach out. I mean, please. Don't hesitate. Keep it to yourself. No, no, no. Don't hesitate to reach out to either, you know, Doug or myself and we'll, as we assemble the agenda, we'll see if we can pull that off the next couple of meetings. Okay. Item 15, general school committee comments going around the table. Anyone have anything to share this evening? Yes, Pete?
I have a few items. So let's see. There's some information that is just starting to come out about the WOW Rising First Through Sixth Academic Camp at the Galvin. And so that's going to be running from July 10 through August 10. It's five weeks and you can register your kid for one week at a time. I think it was 140 something per week. I, I didn't write that part down. And it is Monday through Thursday, 7:45 to noon. And that program will have both an educational component, kind of a snack, and then there will be a wicked cool science program later on in the day. So it's kind of a fun program. My kids did it when it had another name many, many years ago and kind of went between the Galvin and the Woodville when the Galvin was being fixed up at that period of time. So if you're looking for something for your kids to do this summer, take a look at that. As a few things to mention for the month of May, so the Human Rights Commission on Saturday, the 27th, is running a program for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And that's from 1 to 4. And some of our own Wakefield students will be doing the Chinese Lion Dance for the first time ever at this event. So that's pretty cool. And they're also going to have, it's a free event and they're also going to have origami, calligraphy, and other cultural performances at that particular event. I don't have the details on our Memorial Day program, but I know that's going on at the Galvin here on Memorial Day itself on the 29th. Somebody else can give the time for that one. And then our own Stephen Ingles is going to be going to our senior night. I saw him on the, on the sign up there. So if you are not signed up, the evening of Wednesday, May 31, into the morning of June 1, our seniors will be at Dave &amp; Buster's. And this is a really cool program where we're just trying to have something fun for our seniors to do that doesn't involve any types of substances they shouldn't be involved with, so a safe space. And there's a few spots left. If you, if you have nothing to do between 2:30 and 4:30 in the morning at Dave &amp; Buster's, or if you want to chaperone some, some kids on a bus or be here at the high school. And they're also looking for some money as well. So if you go to wakefieldseniornight.com, I believe, you can both find the volunteer form there, which our own Stephen Ingles found. You can donate money and you do need to have an active query on file with the district to participate in that. But I've heard it's a lot of fun. I've never done it myself. But Stephen will, will let us know soon how it is.
Yeah. I'll take a nap first.
Kevin, you look excited.
I've got my own prom.
Sorry.
Don't want to.
And I'm not allowed to go.
Maybe I'll stop by after.
And I'm not allowed to go.
Right.
So, great. Yes, Stephen?
I just, I just wanted to say a thank you to, so this past Saturday, the, the Wakefield Warrior Cleanup Crew, along with the Youth Council cleaned up around the Woodville School and came over to the high school and collected just about 500 pounds of, of trash and whatnot. And DPW came over and picked it up and took it away. It's just something that started about three years ago from a student in elementary school over at the Woodville and it just expanded. And it, they just shut, it happens in the fall, it happens in the spring. And it's just, it's a great event with, with kids and adults. So just to everyone that gives their time, just thank you. And yeah.
Okay. Great. Any other comments? Seeing none. We have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ingles?
Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, May 23, 2023.
All in favor? Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Good night, all. Have a pleasant evening. Bye, Eileen.
Bye, Eileen.
Safe travels.